Jim Entenelli.
I know Jim.
You do? But a lot of nice things.
When there's gonna be a wedding.
Couple months.
There you go.
That's funny, yeah. As time goes on, you can be used to the idea and it won't be like. It's like it'll be like. Yeah.
Chosen on to take it, I'll just get it over with as stands and we come back.
You can read.
I remember him.
Mm-hmm.
Then this has to be four. Yeah.
Uh-huh. Seven o'clock.
Okay. I think it's seven o'clock.
Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen, School Committee and Finance Committee on November third. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reminder that this meeting is being broadcast live by Chelmsford Telemedia and videotaped for later rebroadcast. If anybody else is audio or video recording, please let me know at this time. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, tonight we're gonna have our first report from John Sullivan from the Lansing Heath about his audit findings having to do with the school department. And then a discussion about town meeting warrant articles that will be coming up at town meeting, which is two weeks from tonight. I had asked that the members of, at the table, keep their discussions limited to the financial aspects that we'll be discussing tonight, which is what Mr. Sullivan will be covering. There will be a later time at which he will go through how we got to where we are and how we're gonna make sure that doesn't happen again, making those recommendations. But the focus this evening should be on the financial aspects of what we're working with and how to resolve those. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening and thank you for inviting me here. It's rare that I get to speak to three boards at once, so it's a little different. Our engagement is really in two phases. The first phase was to do a trend analysis for twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and then a projection through the end of fifteen. And so that's where we focused our efforts so far today, trying to answer the questions of just, you know, what are the numbers and what are the problems and what needs to be funded. The second part of this will be looking at transactional cycles, internal controls, policies and procedures, and making recommendations on a number of those items. So we'll just start out, the process of what we did. We actually got downloads of the school's financial numbers into an Excel spreadsheet. We then put twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen together side by side so we can look at trends. And the, what you see here in the slides is the spreadsheet that we created. I would love to print it out for you, but it's one of those that kinda goes the length of the room. And so you won't be able to see all the numbers, but, you know, I'll read them to you and point out what we have. So we took this, this left part was the chart of accounts, the school's chart of accounts. We parsed them out into separate columns so that we could sort, filter and do things with the spreadsheet. But basically, the fund number, the function number, which is the DESE function codes. And then there's places for location, department, grade, and then the last is the object codes. And then what you see here are lots of zeros in the location department and grade. We will be working with the school and making recommendations related to sort of upgrading the chart of accounts so that there's more responsibility building-based abilities as well as the code's not real, compliant with the DESE guidelines. So we'll be making recommendations to get that in line also. So with that, what I wanna do is start out by, the first couple of rows at the top are prior years carryforwards. And so I'm gonna show you those for a couple of reasons. One is they're not part of the totals that we look at because we're looking at each year the actual budget and expenditures against that budget. So, but they are monies that each year are spent. And it sort of gives us a trend if we go all the way to two thousand and twelve. If you look at what was appropriated, what rolled over from the prior years, there's over a million dollars worth of prior year encumbrances that roll over into fiscal twelve. And so what these rollover encumbrances are is when you get at the end of the year and you've expended your budget, kinda what's left over gets encumbered at the end of the year and then it's carried forward and used the next year. So it went in fiscal twelve from somewhat in excess of a million dollars. And then going into thirteen, it was down to nine hundred and forty-six thousand. Going into fourteen, it was down to five hundred thousand. And then going into fifteen, it was down to a hundred thousand, of which fifty-three thousand has been expended against that. So, you know, what that's telling us in some way is that, you know, there was money left over going back to eleven and twelve in the earlier years. And that as the years have been going, that money has been getting tighter and tighter. The other thing that's important about this is to know that the numbers that are on here don't agree with the town's numbers. And so one of the things is that the school has its own separate database and enters transactions in their database. The town has the town's database of which the school is part. But the school has only, you know, very, very summarized accounts within the town's system. So even though they, you know, should merge and reconcile and be the same numbers in the past number of years, they haven't reconciled. So in addition to the chart of accounts issue that I've talked about and possibly restructuring the accounts is also how can we bridge the school's and the town's accounts together so that, number one, they will reconcile and huge efforts won't be needed to figure out what the differences are and try to fix them. So that's on the agenda and on our plate too. So the process that we went through, when we look at two thousand and fourteen, you see the original appropriation. There's a year-to-date actual, which is a combination of the actual plus the encumbered. So what we did is we put in a column for unpaid invoices. So what we know, what we knew coming into this is that there were some eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of two thousand and fourteen invoices that did not get paid out of two thousand and fourteen. They actually were submitted and got paid out of the two thousand and fifteen appropriation. Okay, that's a big problem. But in sort of looking at what is, what is the level of spending for the school in two thousand and fourteen, you really have to bring them back in because they were spent in fourteen even though they weren't paid and charged against fourteen, I mean, that's where the money was spent. In addition, there's another a hundred and forty-something thousand of bills that have been submitted to the town for payment. And the town's rejected the bills as they should because they were prior year bills and there wasn't appropriation in two thousand and fourteen to pay them. And the way that is supposed to be processed is going to town meeting, seeking a ninety percent vote from the voters and coming up with a funding source of how to pay those. I didn't add that hundred and forty thousand dollars into this unpaid invoices column because most of those had been targeted to be paid out of revolving funds, primarily Circuit Breaker and some of the other revolving funds. So because of that, I didn't put them in the general fund and add them in here. So in taking the actual, I came up with a total. And then I calculated a balance based on fourteen. So we've got the budget, we've got the actual, we add back in the bills that got paid out of fifteen into fourteen, and then we come up with a balance. And that tells us whether there was in those accounts a surplus or a deficit. So then the next step we went through is to go through fourteen and say, well, what were the problem accounts? And why are those accounts becoming problems? What is it that caused the deficit? Because let's face it, it's a deficit in fourteen that caused the bills to get rolled over and paid into fifteen because they couldn't be paid out of fourteen. So what I wanna do is just take you through a number of different accounts that we saw were problematic. And I'm gonna start with the teacher's specialists, which is the twenty-three-ten functional code series. Okay, so you can see in this particular series, we see a lot of red. And the total amount comes down to three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three twenty of a deficit in this functional category. I will tell you that a good piece of it is in the special education accounts. These accounts down at the bottom, right here. There is one particular, the district-wide salaries. That has a pretty substantial deficit. If we go all the way back to fiscal twelve, we see there was two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in the budget, two twenty-four spent, so there was a surplus. The same situation existed in thirteen. But in fourteen, the appropriation isn't sufficient, looking in two thousand and fourteen. The appropriation in thirteen was two hundred and thirty-three thousand. In fourteen, it got reduced to a hundred and twenty-two thousand, but the level of expenditure was still up where it previously was. So that created a pretty healthy deficit in that account. But most of the deficits that we see are in these special education accounts at the bottom. Again, just to take a look at one of them, sort of trending. If we go back to two thousand and twelve, there was a million four in the budget, a million four twenty-eight expended, so there actually was a deficit. And that you can see here, these same special education accounts right here. That would show some two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of over expended even back in twelve. Similar in thirteen, not by quite as much, but still a good hundred and fifty thousand of those over expended. So we're having them just continue on into fourteen where if we're just looking at that particular group of accounts, again, the special education accounts, the total of those is some eighty-four thousand over expended. So these salary areas have been over expended going all the way back to two thousand and twelve. So one of the things that we've detected, and we'll look at some more salary accounts, is that we feel that the budget isn't keeping up each year with the raises and the salary increases and the, you know, level of people that are, you know, in the programs. So that there's a lag. And one of the reasons and problems that I have is, in looking, in doing this analysis for twelve, thirteen and fourteen, I'm showing you the original appropriation. What I found is that when I looked at fifteen, there was the original appropriation. And then very early in fifteen, there were like numerous, numerous adjustments between budget accounts. So that, and I see this other places that we work and it's a, you know, a technique that some use, which is just to go through and anything that's over expended, zero it out and then reprogram it against other accounts. And so, you know, the purpose of that is to, you know, see where the surpluses and deficits are and get a handle on where you are overall. The problem with doing that, though, is that the budget that you deliberate and vote on, it just becomes, you know, not a meaningful number anymore. And it just gets moved all over the place. So then, you know, remember that you start your budget process early in the year. So when you're trying to figure out your spending, you know, the budget's kind of all over the place and it's hard to say, you know, well, so for some of these where we've had trends in the past, where, you know, from what was the original appropriation and what was expended, well, they, you know, with all these budget adjustments, you know, it sort of nets out and you don't see them as well. So, you know, again, one of the recommendations that I'll be making is that the budget adjustments be only for program changes and that those program changes be approved by the school committee and that the budget adjustments and funding sources that accompany those program changes be voted on by the school committee. So that's another change that we'll be making a recommendation of. So the next category I'm gonna look at is the substitute teachers. And that's, let's see, twenty-three, twenty-five, which is this category right here. If we look at two thousand and fourteen, there's a deficit in the substitutes, but there's a surplus in the long-term subs Kelly services. So the school, particularly in fourteen, started switching from hiring substitutes to bringing the substitutes in through Kelly services. But if we go back and look at this whole category, you know, for, in two thousand and twelve, it was okay. But if we go into two thousand and thirteen, there was six fifty-nine appropriated, but eight ninety-eight expended. So there was a two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar deficit in two thousand and thirteen. As we go into fourteen, six fifty-nine was appropriated just like it was in fiscal thirteen. So the actual is higher, so not by as much, but still there's a ninety thousand dollar over expenditure in this category. The next area that I wanna work on is twenty-three, thirty, which is the sped PSPs, which is, you know, probably one of the biggest problems. That's this account. And again, the special education part of that are these. So that, you know, if we're looking at fourteen at that particular category of expenditures, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just in that special education category. And if we look at these going back again to, all the way back, if we go to two thousand and twelve, two million, two fifty-two budgeted, two million, four oh two expended for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit. Going into thirteen, two five, three, four, very slight increase, two million, six twenty-four. So there's a deficit again in fiscal thirteen. And then when we go into fourteen, the budget was kept, you know, pretty consistent. Two million, seven expended, so there's a hundred and six thousand dollar deficit there. So this is again, another one of those accounts that, you know, where the amount of being appropriated is lagging what's being expended and catching up to where it needs to be. The next area we're gonna look at are the special services for, the special education services, the twenty-four, forty function series. I will tell you, I do a lot of schools. I have three that I'm working with now, similar to, you know, issues you're going through now. And oftentimes, it's contractual services and tuitions within special education that are, you know, causing deficit problems. And this is certainly a problem here. What I did, there are two accounts that we need to look at. One is this contractual services and the other one are the tuitions. And I have created a spreadsheet just for those. And so we'll take a look at those separately because I think it just helps to look at them individually. Okay, so the first one are the tuitions. So we're starting out with two thousand and twelve. For the tuitions, I'm combining the general fund and the circuit breaker fund together because tuitions are kind of spread out over those two accounts. So in two thousand and twelve, there was a five million, two twenty-two budget. And against that, five million, two twenty-two was four, two forty-six. So there's actually a surplus, okay? That surplus then covered over expenditures and other accounts within various budget categories. Coming into thirteen, we see that the budget went from five million, two, down to four million, seven. But the tuition expenditures went down a little bit. So there was still a surplus, but not nearly as much. Now, what happened in two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fourteen is that one of the collaboratives that the school department uses frequently gave some pretty large credits back to the school department, about a half a million dollars over those two years. So what you're seeing is that, you know, the level of expending here, coming down to here and then down to here were lower for these two years. So coming into fourteen, the budget went up a little bit. The expenditures stayed pretty much the same, so a seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar surplus. And again, that's, so that's including the bills that got paid out of fifteen that we brought back in. So when we look at Circuit Breaker, you know, almost two and a half million, down to one point nine, down to one point nine again. These include all of the fourteen rollover bills for both general fund and circuit breaker that we roll back in here. Now, the problem coming into fifteen is, number one, you can see the budget went from four million, nine seventy-two down to four million, two thirty-one. That's problem number one. Problem number two, as you're seeing, with those credits gone, we've gone from one million, four ninety, I mean, sorry, four million, one ninety to four million, five. So as we sit right now with our projections for fifteen, there's gonna be a deficit in that account, not including any of the fourteen bills that are being, that are in fifteen. And the Circuit Breaker, as you see right here, this is what we're projecting for Circuit Breaker out of fifteen, based on the DESE website, your two thousand and fifteen allocation for Circuit Breaker is two million, three seventy-three, one fifty-seven. Now, the good news about Circuit Breaker is that you actually ended two thousand and fourteen with a six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar surplus in Circuit Breaker. So that's gonna be money that's available to you to certainly help mitigate this problem because you can move some of the tuition bills down to Circuit Breaker. So with a six fifty-five, you'll have almost three million dollars worth of Circuit Breaker money available during fiscal fifteen. The big problem area is the contractual services. And what we saw in two thousand and twelve, there was nothing in the budget, a hundred and sixty-three thousand expended. So there was a deficit in the account there. Two thousand and thirteen, there was again, nothing in the budget. This time, eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars expended for an eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar deficit. In two thousand and fourteen, there is budget in there, but it's half of what the prior year was. And the actual for two thousand and fourteen is a million, four. So in two thousand and fourteen, this one category, over a million dollars in this one category of over expended, that's a big piece of the problem. Even though if we look back at fourteen, you know, there was this surplus in the tuitions account which helped mitigate that, but it's this million and forty-two that's the problem. Looking into fifteen, this is the budget, so that did go up substantially. So whereby the tuitions budget came down some, this budget went up substantially, but still not to the level of the prior year expenditures. As of right now, we've projected about one million, two oh nine, showing a small deficit for the year. But again, this is a volatile area. I mean, at any point in time, you could have a, you know, a designation, student needs that, you know, would cause a specialist or a therapist or someone to be hired. And so this is, you know, this and the tuition accounts are two areas that you really need some cushion because we're so early in the year yet, you know, we're just into November. So most of our year is still ahead of us. So as part of this schedule, I sort of scheduled out all the major vendors here so that the special education department could sort of, you know, see what's, you know, the trend there. So that's the, that area, a major concern. Going into a couple of other areas, the guidance, twenty-seven, ten, we'll go down to that, this area. Last year, it was over expended at the high school by a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. If I go back prior years, that wasn't always the case. It was okay in twelve. It was a little over expended in thirteen, but the budget went down. So we had three hundred and sixty-five thousand in the budget for thirteen, went down to two sixty-seven in fourteen. And the actual expenditures are up higher than they were the previous year. So there's pretty big over expenditure there. So, you know, that one category throws this, you know, is most of what this category for guidance is over expended in two thousand and fourteen. Last one I wanna look at is the utilities. I have a real concern about the utilities. First of all, there have been some programs and some cost savings and, you know, things that are done to help bring utility costs down. Just the general category, if we look at fiscal twelve, we've got seven hundred and twenty-five thousand budgeted, seven forty-five expended, so a small deficit. Budget went up to seven forty-three, seven ninety-three expended, so a little larger deficit. In fourteen, six eighty-eight, so the budget came down from the seven forty-three to six eighty-eight, but eight hundred and eighty-four thousand was expended. So plus some carryover bills, there was actually a two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar over expenditure in fourteen. If I go into fifteen, we can see that the budget has gone down to four hundred and fifty-two thousand from eight eighty-four. So it's basically been cut in half. My concern here is that there are some accounts, you know, like these, the telephone, just as an example, if we take that one account, you know, there's twenty thousand budgeted in twelve, fifty-one thousand expended for a thirty-one thousand dollar deficit. Budget went up to thirty-three thousand the following year, but ninety-five thousand, so a sixty-two thousand dollar deficit. Budget at forty-two thousand in fourteen for an almost eighty thousand dollar deficit. And here, the budget is still at forty-five, and last year it was forty-two. And the telephone is in an area where, you know, your cost savings are gonna be. So as of right now, the amount expended and encumbered doesn't show a large deficit, but I certainly am concerned about that. So, you know, that's sort of looking at what are those issues that caused two thousand and fourteen to be over expended? What I wanna do is take you through two thousand and fifteen because what we've done is, so our process in two thousand and fifteen is we changed, this says original appropriation, but it's actually the adjusted appropriation. We didn't put in the original appropriation to look at this because there was a major shift in the way the school department charged costs off against the special education allocation grant, a large special education grant. In prior years, there were a number of teachers, particularly PSPs, that had been allocated off against the grant. In two thousand and fifteen, they changed and they took transportation and moved transportation over to the grant for about a million dollars. And so what it was showing in this budget to actual is a large surplus in the transportation account and then deficits in all these salary accounts. And it just, it was hard to sort of follow. So we did go through and we adjusted this to be the adjusted appropriation because a lot of that has been adjusted out. So we took the adjusted appropriation, excuse me, year-to-date actual encumbered. And then we added in, I mean, we pulled out the two thousand and fourteen invoices. Because if we're looking at pure two thousand and fifteen, we don't want it confused by the two thousand and fourteen invoices that rolled over. That gave us a net and we calculated the balance. Now, this column is, I call it a required column. And what that is, not everything gets encumbered. You know, a lot of things are easy to encumber. You have an annual contract for transportation and you have that contract amount. They're gonna bill in accordance with the contract so you can encumber that full transportation contract. But, you know, and a lot of the salaries are contracted for the full-time teaching positions. But a lot of salaries aren't contracted and a lot of other items aren't contracted. So what we do is we go in and say, based on prior year's history, what do we think it's gonna take you to get through the rest of the year for those line items that are not contracted? So that's our column here. We put this column together based on historical patterns. Then we sat down with the school's management team. They went through every single line item and said, yes, we're gonna need that money or that's a discretionary program. We can say, no, we're not gonna buy that equipment this year or we don't need that much in whatever, you know, art or math supplies or whatever. And so they've made cuts, as they have throughout this whole fifteen process, been making cuts. You will see in some cases in the required columns, there's actually some negative numbers. The negative numbers show up because the encumbrances for the salaries, what happens sometimes when somebody leaves, the position is open and they've encumbered and haven't removed the encumbrance so that it's still sitting in there, even there's no intent to fill the vacancy. So we've in a few places had identified those and taken them back out. So we've, in a few places, had identified those and taken them back out. And so over the course of all of this, so fine tuning the required column and taking out the problems in the, you know, where we know, basically, we've come down to 2015 with a projected deficit of some $342,103. Now, since I was last here going through those required, the school departments have, has also found a couple of other cases where there's positions within the system that are encumbered that don't need to be there. And so there's about another $130,000, I think, that they've found that they'll discuss with you. In general, the, I've got a real problem with the payroll encumbrances. Our first shot at looking at the payroll encumbrances, and we tested them, found out that there were errors in the, you know, some people are employed with 21 paychecks, some with 26, and variations. There were errors in the service length in the encumbrances that caused errors. So the business office went through those in detail and fixed all of those. So we re-entered our encumbrance numbers to get there. But we also found through the course of this, in doing this, that there are inconsistencies in where people are being charged. And just to show you sort of the most, I think it's in the 2330 category where, you know, we had some over expenditure problems anyway. Yeah, so what you see here, I mean, there's $855,000 showing as over expended in this category this year, but you see some pretty big numbers right there, $124,000 in the 562. We found the 562, which is being allocated against the McCarthy School. When I went through and printed out the lists for all of these and had the Special Education Department go through them and look at the actual assignments, they found 23 people in this particular category that shouldn't be charged to McCarthy. So there are still some errors. There are valid employees that are working here, but they're being charged to the wrong accounts. And because they're being charged to the wrong accounts, it's really hard to predict, you know, what the result for the end of the year is. So, you know, for example, in this particular category, there's a, let's see, the budget is $259,000, but the year-to-date actual is $117,000. So what we know is that in this category, these teachers work 21 pay periods, and there have been three pay periods so far. So if I take the $117,000 divided by three pay periods, it gives me an average per pay period multiplied by 21, and it tells me what the cost is going to be for the year. And so I've projected out, and so I've got a $700,000 amount in my required column based on that. Because these, as an example, you can see for all of these categories, there are no encumbrances for these categories. These teachers don't get encumbered, okay? So there has to be another way to track this stuff. So over the next, you know, few weeks and month, you know, the school department really needs to do some work in going through the assignments and getting them put in the right places and then going back and doing some recalculations. So at this point, that's where we are. So, you know, my biggest concerns, you know, we've got a projection, my biggest concerns, we have the utilities that I'm a little uncomfortable with, the payroll allocations and being real accurate on those, I'm a little uncomfortable with. I mean, we know that there's still a couple of cases where people are encumbered, that the positions are vacant, they're not going to be filled. So there's going to be some pluses and minuses, and that's going to be the focus. You know, so kind of my major recommendation coming out of this is that, you know, it's great to have the encumbrances and, you know, I mean, that's pretty progressive in terms of, you know, statewide and school departments and, you know, managing accounts, getting all the payroll and all the encumbrances in there. That's good, it's progressive, but you can't stop there. Particularly when we see the problems with budgets, just, you know, from year to year being insufficient in certain categories. You have to sit down now and project, say, what's it going to take us on the level of spending? And so as the months go by, you know, right now I have three months, and then I can, so I can divide the actual by three and multiply it by 21, but well, you know, when you're five, six months into it, you've got some pretty accurate numbers. So that, what I'm recommending is that this process be continued so that, you know, this required column or projected column, whether it's monthly or every two months, it's a lot of work, you know, but at least as a minimum, every two months, go back through it, look at what's been expended and encumbered today, project out to the end of the year, and sort of focus on, you know, where you think you're going to be at the end of the year. You know, also, the level of detail here is a level of detail that the administration and the school committee has not had, you know, their access to that in the past. When they review budget reports, they're very summarized, and then remember when I say, well, the budget gets adjusted all over the place, so that, you know, the numbers, as you go through the year, can look pretty neat, and, you know. But looking at this level of detail, I think, and, you know, we'll do some more work with the chart of accounts to try to set up some responsibility centers, so not only the administration and the school committee looking at these, but also holding some of the key managers and people that are, you know, the department heads and principals and others that are responsible for, you know, their responsibility centers, hold them accountable too, and have them looking at what their spending patterns are and so forth. So that's kind of what I have in the letter that I sent out to you. So the challenge is, we have three categories, the fiscal 2014 bills, $878,340, unpaid bills, another $141,245. And then, you know, at this point, we're projecting a deficit in fiscal '15 of $350,000. On the other hand, what resources does the school have available to it other than, I mean, that the town could provide to them would be on the Circuit Breaker of $665 and the School Choice of $573. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chair and...
Okay, do we have any questions for Mr. Solomon?
I do.
Kathy?
Hello?
Hi.
I wanted to ask a question about the childcare account that the school has, which is also revolving fund, and...
Can you push that microphone towards her?
Oh, can you not hear me? I'm sorry. I wanted to ask a question about the childcare account, which is a revolving account that the school does use. In your analysis, at this point, have you gone through and make sure that the childcare is being charged fully for all the appropriate uses of, like, they use the buildings and the, you know, the buses? Are they, have those charges been evaluated?
Yeah, so, you know, in this analysis, I've only brought forth the Circuit Breaker and the School Choice revolving funds because the other accounts, you know, such as the childcare and, you know, some of the fee accounts, adult education, continuing education-type accounts, are pretty restricted in their use. I haven't looked into, we've had discussions, I've been party to discussions about, you know, there have been charges, you know, direct charges into that account, but there's also been allocations to cover some of the costs. I can't say at this point in time that you've gone as far as you potentially could go in recovering some of the, you know, insurance space costs and, you know, custodial and those kinds of things, and maybe some more work could be done in that area to squeeze out a few more dollars. But, you know, you do have to be careful in that account as to what you charge against that.
But I want to just follow up, and then I'll ask another question later. On that account, it has $1 million and change in it, and I was wondering if that could be reviewed to see if there were excess funds that could actually be returned to the town for free cash? Is that something that, you know, that happens? Like, say, right now, they have a million, $1,999,000 in that account, and it's building up over the years, and if they don't need to have that much reserve to operate the childcare program, could the school committee make a choice to return some of that money to the town for free cash to also offset some of these expenses?
Yeah, I think, you know, our discussions so far have been that, you know, the money would have to stay in the account as long as you're continuing to provide, you know, those services and that program because it's targeted to benefit, you know, those that participate in the program. So typically, if you want to use that service, you can use it to reduce fees and reduce, you know, what you're charging parents to participate in the program. But in terms of making that available either to the school department or, you know, to the town in way of free cash would mean discontinuing the program, and then the surplus might be available.
Patrick Kamara, Finance Committee, your recommendation is that more accountability is in place. Who do you specifically recommend to hold accountable? Who holds who accountable?
Yeah, so, you know, it comes from the top down. I mean, the school committee puts together and votes on a budget, and then, you know, the administration, the superintendent, the business office, and all the department heads, you know, human services and special education, you know, all have a responsibility to monitor and, you know, manage that budget throughout the year. You know, but certainly, you rely very heavily on the business office. They're the numbers people, and, you know, you rely on them bringing you, you know, detailed, accurate information to make decisions with.
I have a question. Tom Gilroy, Finance Committee, are there any funds budgeted for the legal cost that will be incurred as a result of this? There's a couple of losses that are under, they're underway right now, and the numbers could be significant, that's important.
So the legal services budget is, in 2015, the budget is $70,000. Actual and encumbered now, taking out the unpaid invoice, is about $39,000, so that leaves about $30,000. We put $20,000 in the required column, again, just based primarily on historical data. So, you know, that's where the legal budget stands.
That's a little bit optimistic.
You mentioned that you've done this for a number of school districts.
Yes.
What is the major cause of this kind of problem for the other school districts?
Well, you know, to a certain extent here, like others, special education costs drive, budgets high. When you look at just, you know, that contractual services line, I mean, that's just an astronomical growth, cost growth. You know, that I see as the most common of the ones that I'm working with. I will say, overall, what, you know, what the problem is, you know, the challenges that schools face is that, you know, when we went back to the Great Recession years, 2008, 2009, there was a lot of money, supplemental money made available to you, and it was through the ERA grants and some of the state grants, and there was lots of additional monies made available. And that, you know, going into '10, '11, and '12, those monies started drying up to where you're relying now on local dollars again. And what we see, you know, you're limited by Proposition 2.5, and you're limited to what, you know, what the town is able to, you know, charge out in tax increases. So there's pressures there, and sometimes the costs in certain categories, you know, I mean, special education costs aren't subject to Prop. 2.5. I mean, they have other rules and other requirements that are going to drive those costs. And so, you know, I'm seeing a number of schools getting squeezed right now. They're just, the money that was available before isn't there, it's more local dollars, but yet costs, you know, costs are continuing to rise. And, you know, it's difficult, you know, you have to try to, you know, you have your negotiations and your contracts, and, you know, a 2% increase in salary is a much bigger increase than that because you have step and grade increases and other things. So, you know, there's a lot of pressure on costs in many areas. So it's just, we're in a cycle that I'm seeing that schools, you know, the problem's tightening. And I've done some, like, long-term, 20-year projections for a couple of towns too, and, you know, the education cost trends compared to other costs, you know, they go up at a faster rate. It's just some of the costs are less controllable.
Patrick, one of the things that the school committee did is, we brought in an outside consultant firm to give us some advice on special education. And one of the things that, to reduce costs, was to bring some of the outside tuition in-house, bring those capabilities in-house so we can handle it ourselves to reduce the cost. During the exercise, and we've actually, I've looked at it this past week, one of the things that was really interesting, and the cost was literally growing at a significant rate. We brought some of those services in-house, which increased our costs in-house, leveled off, but did not reduce our outside tuition costs. So we leveled off, which was fine, but we increased, it ended up increasing because we brought in services, I will even say, at a cheaper rate to bring it in-house. So we're getting hit on both sides, you know, outside tuition and then also inside costs. So it is a difficult, you know, and it's one of those service areas, it's one of those service areas that, you know, as an organization, as a team, and I'm not saying we would even consider it, but it's one of those areas where you just don't say, no, you can't. It's against the law. You can't say no. It is what it is. And we wouldn't.
What portion of this problem is a result of incompetence as opposed to just being victims of circumstances?
You can make that...
Well, I mean, if you, I'm not in a position to evaluate the efficiency and, you know, level of your delivery of special education services. You bring in, as you said, you bring in special education specialists to look at that. I can tell you that the costs going up in special education that I'm seeing here, I'm seeing everywhere. And certainly in those schools that are having, you know, some financial problems right now, they're driving up, they're driving up the costs. You look at the trends in those costs compared to others. So, you know, the fact that you are bringing, and it's not the first, you know, time I hear this, there is an effort, you know, in many of these communities to say, we've got to stop paying these expensive out-of-district placements and start bringing, you know, more in-house because we can deliver those services more efficiently. I mean, a lot of your out-of-district placements are collaborative, so, you know, that too is an efficient delivery model. So there's only so much you can do, but I'm seeing, you know, like yours, where you bring students in-house, but you're still, every year, you get that two or three more students that are placed that, you know, I mean, I've seen, it'd be $300,000 per student.
Right.
I mean, I've seen that. One placement is going to be $300,000, and you have no choice. You can't service that student internally, and, you know, those kinds of things, you know. So, I mean, I don't have the expertise to look at special education service delivery and, you know, determine whether it's efficient or managed well. It's not my area.
I have a question about your main findings there at the end, which I'm still trying to run my head around a little bit. I understand we have around the $800,000 of 14 bills paid in '15, the 143 still left from '14, and then the 2015 deficit of the 533, 353. And then you mentioned the Circuit Breaker and the School Choice funds, which are available funds. Could you just explain which of those, available funds, the Circuit Breaker and School Choice, which of those could be paid off, could help to pay off those monies that we have that are sort of in deficit, if you will, the $800,000, the 143, and the current deficit of 353? Can you explain that relationship?
Well, so, you know, you can't charge things to the Circuit Breaker account that don't have anything to do with it. Well, so, so, you know, I, I, you, you can't charge things to the circuit breaker account that don't have anything to do with special education. But, you know, you've got so many special education costs that you can take eligible special education costs, move them over to circuit breaker.
But only for?
Leaving surpluses that could then be reprogrammed within the budget. And, and the same with school choice, you know, technically, school choice are those incremental costs for, for educating, you know, students that are coming in from outside of your district that, that you're receiving money for. However, the incremental cost is often hard to define. I mean, if, if you have one more student in a classroom, what's your incremental cost for educating that student? So the fact of the matter is, you know, what, the only thing that D E S E doesn't want you to do or take a non-net school spending eligible costs and transferring off to circuit breaker and then paying the costs and, and getting the net school spending credit. So again, they're very flexible. So you have all kinds of eligible costs within your operating budget that you can move over to those two accounts, giving you surplus within your budget to fund these other deficits.
Okay, and, and just to clarify, one more follow-up question. Uh, showing that the eight hundred thousand has already been paid out of fiscal fifteen, you're still assuming that the total fiscal fifteen deficit will only be about three hundred fifty-three thousand? So we don't also have to go and pay that eight hundred thousand in any other way?
Not in any other way. You have to pay it.
Right.
With the three fifty. So, I mean, if I were to have left it in fifteen, then your deficit in fifteen would have been the three fifty plus the eight seventy-eight. So.
It's the eight seventy-eight plus the three fifty.
So we do?
So it is, yes.
Okay.
It is like over one point three.
No, you, you have to cover all of, all of those three items in fifteen.
Okay, so it's not going to be just the three fifty-three?
No.
No.
No, the, the purpose and the way I wanted to look at it this way is, I mean, if you think about it this way, I mean, if you had an eight hundred thousand dollar over expenditure this year and you got a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget increase, how are you going to be expected to, to, to finish fifteen at a surplus?
That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, it's just, it's just not going to happen.
John, can you go down to, one of the questions that I had, um, can you go down to the, uh, utilities section, I guess? FY fifteen? And, um, outside of that one line item, which is here, the phones, one of the things that concerned me, and Frank brought it to my attention, um, our consultant, um, we've plugged in actual numbers based upon, and we cut this, this number was cut in half based upon, um, well, we anticipated an ESCO savings from a seven, or eight hundred thousand down to about four fifty. So, so, right, what was it? Yeah, sorry.
Eight eighty-four.
Down to four fifty, so we cut it in half. As, as what, because we took it out of the budget. Now, the concern that I have is if you go to fifteen and you go to actuals, we're chewing up at a significant rate. You understand? In other words, this is actual numbers for fifteen. If we only budgeted four fifty, we've already consumed two oh nine in three and a half months, four months. I'm concerned that by June, we're going to expend more than two hundred. In other words, the savings we thought we were going to get are not there, and the heat wasn't even turned on yet. That's my concern. In other words, I don't know how the formula was generated to say that we're going to have a savings of seven hundred and whatever.
Sadly, look at the actual expenditures from last year.
If you look at, look at the actual, if you could fly that over, the actual expenditures for last year were, were over the budget. So you're right, it's a real problem. The, the budget was eight eighty-four, they actually spent. But see, but you took this number and cut it in half. Took the eight eighty-four and cut it in half. Right, but if you look at your actual, it was, it was nine, it was nine twenty-four. Right, right. But if you, if you take that number and you cut it in half, and you go to the next, all the way over to fifteen, you're still at the four, see? Still at the four fifty level, so it's still at nine hundred. So we took half. Because basically that's what we assumed from the plan. We were going to take, so we took it down.
So you actually need to add in a half a million dollars?
Just to meet the, the, the utility bill.
So now you have to have those two, potentially.
This is, this is, I, I. That's assuming, that's assuming, that's assuming no. This is the first actual number that got plugged in in the last, right, Frank, am I correct, in the last?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Is the first actual number?
The number is two oh nine, the plugins.
Right.
This is stuff that's been put in in the last thirty to forty-five days, correct?
That's correct.
So that's, that's, in other words, so to answer your question, so it's just getting plugged in, and then we're looking at it and we're going, wait a minute. We thought we were going to get a significant savings, but we're not. And I don't understa- I, the question that I have is, I don't understand.
I, I will say, just, just, you do have to consider, I, I agree with you in utilities is an area that I have a concern in, but remember, forty thousand of, of the unpaid invoices relate to, to that. So you really get to take the two, two oh nine minus forty, so it's really more like a hundred and sixty year-to-date.
But even at a hundred and sixty.
But still on a four fifty-two budget that, that's.
It doesn't, that, that's the only ques- that's only for that one. Other things we, we, but I just want to try to break it down by each individual area. We can address each one individually instead of just looking at a number. You know, we could say eight eighty is a number, but unless we break that eight eighty down or that three fifty number, whatever the, the loss is, unless we break it down and really analyze each section, we're not going to know how to fix each one. This is just one of the areas that as soon as I saw that number, I went, uh-oh.
Does, does the business manager have the unilateral authority to do that, or does she have to say, you know, may I do that?
We were, we were given, we were given.
We were given that number.
We were given this number.
Yeah. Now whom?
ESCO.
By, by the ESCO savings.
Really?
Cut in half.
But it's not, it's not going to be cut in half.
Tom, we should probably talk to the Energy Committee about that.
Number that I'm given. Okay, so we drew the assumption. As a matter of fact, the entire budget was dropped by seven something, wasn't it? Yeah, seven fifty-something. So I'm not even realizing all of it in this area. I don't know where the rest of it should have been, but. So I'm, I'm just, again, this is the first time, I'm not trying to say any, this is the first time I saw it was, was actually this morning at a subcommittee meeting, and I was like, wait a second, something's.
So what's the need for the utilities?
Well, I, I didn't, I didn't have any basis because everything's changed and I'm being told, well, we got that number from someone else. And I'm just saying, well, look at what's been spent year-to-date, and you got to do a double take on that.
You can take the what's spent year-to-date minus unpaid invoice, divide it by three, and.
You can't, you can't do that.
Yeah, because of the.
The cost will be higher in the winter.
It's going to be higher in the winter, because you, you, we haven't, we just turned the heat on.
Winter will be all natural gas, one for the heating, not electricity. All right. I don't know, that's going to play a factor into it, new heating systems.
Still got the electric though.
Right, and electric costs have been projected to go up at thirty-seven percent or thirty-three percent, so.
You guys on default?
Yeah, I know you have a fixed contract, I, I know, so, right. So, I mean, and I understand that part. So it's just, it's something that I, I, I noticed this morning, and I think everybody did. It was brought to our attention by Frank, and I was like, man, this is not.
And so, so what I've been saying is that, you know, you do have the six sixty-five in circuit breaker and the five seventy-three for school choice. But, you know, given where my level of comfort is with everything right here, you need to have a cushion. You, you, you can't, you can't just, you know, say three fifty's going to be the number, or.
Right.
You know, you need to have a cushion in there for things like utilities and, and special education possibilities you don't know about yet. We're only in the early part of November, and, you know, you just can't, you just can't bring it down to zero. It's.
So can I ask another question about, I just, I'm sorry. On the projected deficit in two thousand and fifteen, we're talking about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar number. And just to clarify, to make sure I understood the conversation, is that you've already, in your spreadsheet, derive at the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit. You've already taken into consideration the changes they've made to their budget so far. Like when last we met, they've, the reduction of staff by three people, and they, they identified some other savings of like not ordering supplies, so on and so forth. So your three hundred and fifty thousand dollar of deficit for two hundred and fifteen already incorporates all those changes?
With, with the exception of the last couple of, of, um, positions where they found they were still in encumbrances even though they've cut the positions, so there's.
The, the science coordinator and the library coordinator are still encumbered.
Right. They're still in the three fifty number.
They are.
Correct. They're still.
As if they were still employed.
Correct. The real number, the real number is if you encum- if you take, if you take that encumbrance out, the real number drops down to a negative two twelve. But they're still going to need to take another two twelve out, two hundred and twelve thousand out.
Okay, and the other, uh, choices, the other choices, the other non-staff choices that, uh, Dr. Tiana identified at our last meeting, I think he said, uh, there were some supplies, and there was a position that you was empty that you weren't going to hire. Those, those savings are incorporated in this three hundred and fifty thousand dollar number.
All the savings that we've gone through are, are incorporated in that number. And as Mr. Sullivan had said, uh, we have two staff folks, the positions were reduced, but they're not part of that encumbrance. Should we add them to that encumbrance? It'd be an additional one hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So you'd take the three fifty, you'd minus the one thirty-eight, maybe at the two twelve that Nick just mentioned.
I have a question. Um, these numbers are pretty staggering, I think, for all of us and everybody that's watching as well. But I want to emphasize that we need to work together as a town to get this on an even keel. I do have a, a question that we need to grapple with in the next couple of weeks before the special town meeting, before the adjourned town meeting. And we also need to know what the schools need to get them through fiscal year fifteen. I think that we need to draw back so much money that we still have to understand what is needed for the rest of the year. And it's, it's, we can go, um, line by line and we can go category by category, but we need to look at the, at the, the large detail and then look at the details, I think, after we solve this huge problem. Because we need to get this sorted out by the beginning of December. Is this correct? So we need, we need, we need more of a, a handle on what the schools are going to need to the end of fiscal fifteen and what we need to appropriate from free cash, more specifically, for the seventeen.
All right, so I think what you've got in front of you, uh, lays out the major costs that, that we're facing. Uh, the, the eight seventy-eight, the one forty-one, and the three fifty-three. What it doesn't include is what a reasonable buffer would be.
Okay, but I, I want to go back before, before we sit down and we say, yep, we're all set on, on our budget, and we say that whatever the number it is, two twelve or three fifty. I'm going to go back to this section right here.
Well, I, I think that needs, that needs to be part of the conversation about what a reasonable buffer is. Also, the way to value the proposed, uh, or, or the projected savings from the layoffs of the other two coordinators. Obviously, there's a question about whether that full amount's going to be realized or not. So how do you value something like that where there's uncertainty? And I think we're going to have to address that as we talk about what kind of a buffer should we have in addition to the other costs that we, that, that are staring us right in the face. At the leadership meeting last Friday, uh, I asked the financial professionals for a little bit of guidance. And I would say that they felt that they would be comfortable with a five hundred thousand dollar buffer in the school, in the available school funds. So rather than spending down school choice and the circuit breaker to zero, my impression was that they, they felt like if we left five hundred thousand dollars available there, and with the knowledge that we have another two hundred or so thousand coming in in school choice in this year, that that would be a reasonable buffer. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, as I put in the letter that I sent to all of you, I just, I would be very concerned about using all of the school choice and all of the, uh, circuit breaker to balance out that two thousand and fourteen problem and even the three fifty. Because, I mean, that's, that's a projection, and, and I'm concerned about some of the numbers. So, I, you know, if you use all of that to balance that out, then, you know, the, the schools, you know, the next alternative is to, to monitor very closely and start cutting positions, you know, doing it through position cuts.
Frank?
If I may, um, we did say that five hundred thousand dollars, uh, was a number that we could use for the rest of the year. We also mentioned that there needs to be a lot of work in the payroll accounts. We're not absolutely certain as to the, uh, the balances that would be needed there. We do need to do some work in the payroll accounts. And as Nick just mentioned, we also have to review the utility accounts. So those two pieces of information have not taken place yet, and I think that we need to spend some more time on those.
But if we, so if we start to, if, if we say that we have to start with five hundred thousand as a buffer, uh, then I think what you need to do is you need to look at the expenses that we have. You need to look at the revenue, the, the resources that we have available, which are basically the school choice and the, and the circuit breaker funds. You add those two sources together, you take out five hundred thousand, and that's what we have available on hand to pay down those outstanding bills. And the balance, we're going to have to ask for, from town meeting.
But again, out of that, you're not including utilities.
No, but that's why we're reserving fi- that's why we're keeping a five hundred thousand dollar cushion, right? I mean, another way to.
Oh, okay.
Another way to think about it would be, we could spend down to zero. But I, I think what we're hearing is that we'd almost certainly wind back, uh, back up in the same position in, in April.
I didn't realize the five hundred included the utilities.
Okay, but.
Well, it's.
Before you, before you make that, that, that number, I just, quick calculation and just tried to estimate, estimate where we would proj- how much more money you would need to get to, and again, I don't know, you don't know what the savings actually is going to be. I mean, I know you have a contract, and I, but I don't know what that number is. But, um, if you, if you run that number out, that two oh, the two sixty number, I use your two sixty number. If you take that two sixty number and you run it out to July, roughly need about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to complete the year in utilities. But there's going to be savings that you're going to realize. I just don't know what those savings are going to be. But that's what I just, I just ran it out.
Say one sixty.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know how to do it any other way.
One sixty.
One sixty, right, one sixty. Took that one sixty number, and then I tried to run it out from a usage standpoint based upon previous year. And you're talking about roughly about another seven hundred fifty, which is really weird because that's around the same amount of money that we took out of the, about seven twenty-five that we took out of the plan. I, I, I'm just doing it by rough numbers, and that's just what it comes out to.
Shoot me.
I'll have to look into it.
Has anybody done nice, neat, little scenarios? Like, because I think I'm getting confused about with all these numbers floating around, the cash needed and FY fourteen, two thousand and fourteen totally unpaid and the deficit. Have we done any like little, nice tabular formulas here for us to say? We could, you know, or just get confused with all the numbers.
Just to let you know, the, the school committee itself as a full committee has not seen all the numbers together in this detail, has not. Because only the subcommittee has, myself and Evelyn are the only two that have seen it, okay? And, and, and tomorrow night's our first meeting with all the numbers, because this, all this came out Friday. So this is the first time the committee's getting together. I think when the, and I'm not going to speak for Mike, he's the chair, but I think the objective for our meeting tomorrow is to sit down and come up with that list, that, that piece of paper that says, okay, we're going to take down this account to this level, we're going to, we recommend to take down this, this, to this level, and then get back to the boards and say, okay, this is what we think we need, and this is where I think we can use help, and this is, you know what I mean, and, and we're going to try to use some of the recommendations from the financial folks. And, and we can give people options. We'll say, okay, we'll, we will take this account down to zero, if you like. There's going to be a lot of risk, but we'll take it down to zero, but if we take it down to zero, this is what I need, okay? And then we'll, and then by the way, we better be prepared for next April or next year because it's going to be a totally different budget. One of the things I did learn from this whole exercise right up front, for as long as I've been on the committee, you know, and this is no, this is just how it's always been done. You know, we, we get a number, this, we got to work into that, but we back into the number from a budget standpoint. It's always been that way, and it's worked, okay? But I think going forward with some of these issues, I think what really needs to happen is we need to be proactive on our side. We have to take the responsibility to put a budget together and then give it to the town manager, and he has to say yay or nay. Or say, if he says, if he says no, then we either go to town meeting or we try to work something out. But we need to do it prior to instead of after the fact.
So that's a zero-based budget?
Zero, for us, correct. But see, when, when Paul says zero-based budget, that, that's for the whole town wide. For us, that's not zero base. It's actually, in a way, a reduction. And we have to come up, we have to come up with additional savings in other places. And we have to come up, we have to come up with additional savings in other places where, that we're running out of those things at this point. We really are running out of those things.
I think with what, I haven't seen all of the numbers because I just saw some of them this morning just to see what, see what the deficits were and, you know, and what we're over. So I haven't analyzed the whole thing because I only just saw it, you know, not too long ago. And to try to take a look and see what the trends on my own, so I need to get, you know, a copy of this. If the school committee can all get a forward electronic copy, that would be nice, or anyone else that would need it. But I think with, as a result of the audit, what it does in terms of projections, it gives us as a school committee and the finance committee and, and the board of supervisors a better idea of exactly where in the projections, where we're gonna need the money. And even so, it doesn't give us the actual number that we may need in sped, so we've got to kinda guesstimate if, and have a cushion in sped in case we end up with more students within that line item.
Is it possible to get the breakdown by schools?
There, there is a, under the location code, you have the, the schools, so, yes.
So could, at least, can we, I get a copy of this and broken down by schools?
The code is right there, so if you look at the line item.
I understand, but I'm not gonna break it down. I want it by school.
Oh, oh, separate report.
A separate report by school.
I can take this spreadsheet and resort and give you something by school, yeah.
How would that help you, Stratt?
I, I, I like to be able to compare the Byham School with the, the different schools.
But, well, the buildings are different, some of them, from others.
That may be so, but that's, that should be done.
But do, you're, you're absolutely correct, but be prepared because John did mention that, for example, the McCarthy School, they haven't completed all the adjustments from a staffing standpoint and who's getting allocated to what school. So you'll see a number skewed significantly. Wasn't it McCarthy that was on?
McCarthy had twenty-three PSPs assigned that don't belong there.
They're, they're belonging to another school, so they still have to go through the exercise and make those, those, those adjustments.
Yeah, and I would like to see it went by school, the number of personnel there. And, and the other thing is, as you reduce the, the budget, I would like to know what the effect is on the student, students' education. It's nice to say, you know, we cut this and we're gonna cut that. And I would like to see when you make these adjustments, just what effect it has on the education of the students. I think that's most important. And I don't, we never talk about that, but I think we should. And.
Something to add to that, just real quickly, I mean, I, I know going into town meeting, if you're gonna be talking about this tomorrow night, I know it's, it's very early and if there's any way you could do this, have some idea of what the real deficit would have been for fourteen, what it is for fifteen, and what you may need for sixteen. Just, it might just be something good to think about because I really feel like at town meeting, people are gonna feel uncomfortable voting for a million dollars or more extra supplemental money without knowing what the plan is moving forward. And I know it, it may be very early to think about that, but I just think it'd be really, something really helpful to start thinking about now.
That's, that's a good point, and I think, you know, Paul, in order to prepare for the, for town meeting, has to have these numbers. So in order to present them to town meeting. So, yeah, obviously, we need the answers sooner rather than, rather than later. So Paul, you wanna speak to the timeline as far as getting the?
Well, I think Matt's point was, and I think it, it sort of got overlooked, we talked a little bit more about it on Friday. The six sixty-five in fourteen circuit breaker wasn't applied to the fourteen bills. So if you came out with an eight seventy-eight prior year deficit in fourteen, and you then applied the six sixty-five, you can see that it's only a deficit of about a quarter of a million dollars. And then this, I mean, and then this year, it's up to three fifty. I think your point, your point is on mark, Matt. It's, you know, the number's in the aggregate, but had the circuit breaker been applied into fourteen, you know, again, you would be looking at a three fifty problem, not an eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar problem. And I think, and I think, I think your point is right on the mark because we sort, we sort of get overwhelmed with the numbers. But like you said, if you look into the numbers, well, plus you have the unpaid bills on top of that, so it's maybe a half million. But the bottom line is, you're right, it's not over, you know, it's not over a million, it's a half million. While I have the mic, if you could also take a moment, one of the things that you touched upon on Friday and you didn't touch upon this evening, I think you may have just passed over it. Could you take a moment and look at the athletic account? Because that was one of the things that sort of caught our eye on Friday was the FY fourteen athletic account was over expended by over a hundred thousand dollars. And, and I think if you could just take a moment on that, because that was a trend that I think sort of floored us because we had spent so much time talking about the school lunch deficit. And then we found out what the actual, the actual fourteens, that the athletic deficit was even great, significantly greater than that.
So in two thousand and twelve, athletics were, this is a general fund budget, and let me just first by saying that with athletics, there's also a revolving fund. So there are some costs paid out of the revolving fund and some costs paid out of the general fund. There's, there's both. So in, in two thousand and twelve, four fifty-five was budgeted in the general fund, four fifty-four was expended, so for small surplus. In thirteen, four sixty-four budgeted, five oh-two expended, so there was a bit of a deficit in thirteen. Going into fourteen, four sixty-five budgeted, slight increase, but five sixty-six expended. And, and you have to add in some unpaid bills, so a total of five eighty expended. So there's a hundred and fourteen thousand dollar expenditure that's primarily in this, this, this one category. But as we looked in to see what was causing that deficit, it, it appeared that there had been a deficit in the revolving fund in fourteen that, that got covered by the general fund appropriation. And then going into fifteen, the appropriation is back down to a hundred and forty, so a hundred and forty-one thousand in fourteen, and then in fifteen, the appropriation's a hundred and forty-four thousand, so. You know, that should be adequate for fifteen if, if there's not a deficit in the revolving fund. You know, given the fact there was a deficit in the prior year, that's a concern.
And then while I raise that point, it also shows you the impact cutting across between revolving funds and the operating budget. We, we spend a lot of time talking about the fifty million dollar appropriation to the operating budget. But as noted, we have revolving funds that are almost another fifteen million that are sort of coming in and out of the budget and, you know, and that.
Additional costs.
Right, and those additional costs, they can't be overlooked.
Just back on looking at the line item budget and, and we're just talking about utilities. One of the things I'd like to see is, I think it's always helpful to look behind the numbers. I think we need to have either John Sullivan or a consultant in the business office look and actually pull invoices or look at a munis report and see what's been charged to that. Because, for example, if you look, if you look on one of those lines, it looked like one of the telephone expenses is over expended by about seventy-five or, my eyes are a little off, but seventy-five is seventy-nine thousand.
You're right.
You know, we've, we've made a significant investment in capital to, to put VoIP phones in all of the school buildings. I think this year are we the, the final year of it. And so McCarthy, and so, you know, that's supposed, that's supposed to be a more efficient way of, you know, for a telephone system. So I'd like to see the invoices behind those, because I think that would tell a story.
Could you go back to that telephone line? I just wanted to see the prior.
Going down to utilities.
Which, which year do you wanna look at? This is the superintendent's telephone, which it appears where there's a lot of the bills are being, are being allocated in that, that category.
Well, this is the main office.
So if we go back, it was originally twenty thousand dollars budgeted there, fifty-one thousand expended. So there's a thirty-one thousand dollar deficit in twelve. The budget went up to thirty-three thousand, so not enough to cover the, you know, prior year. But the actual in thirteen was ninety-five thousand, so there's a sixty-two thousand dollar deficit in thirteen. We go into fourteen, the budget's increased to forty-two thousand, but the actual was a hundred and twenty-one thousand. So there's a deficit in that line of seventy-nine thousand.
Are those all landlines or are they cell phones as well?
Cell phones.
That's a lot of cell phones.
There's no cell phones.
No, there's no cell phones in there. Just landlines.
So is there any general reason for that?
Is it hardware? Did they get a new system?
We don't know that, that's.
We have to look at, John said, John said that's why we gotta pull the invoices and take a look exactly what they are. They may not be just phone bills, they may be equipment.
It could be data lines.
The other thing I, you would wanna see is, based on what we heard about the McCarthy payroll issue, you wanna make sure, is that, is the electricity bill that says McCarthy, is it actually for the McCarthy School or is it some other school that was erroneously charged there? That's what I would wanna look at as well.
But, but in the, in the aggregate, you wouldn't expect it to change very much, right? I mean, you might see, you might see it move from school to school, right? And, and that goes, I think, to Stratt's point, that you wanna look at the individual schools and make sure they all make sense.
But you can sort by column.
Right, you can, but the, the thing is, you need to make sure that what was charged to that account was correct. That's the key, looking at the invoices. You know, I mean, you can sort all you want if you don't charge it.
Right.
Crappy date in, crappy date out.
So, so within the chart of accounts, we have the individual schools, like eleven is a high school. But the, the problem is that in the, in the, you know, district wide, if you will, they're all zeros. So telephone, I mean, that's like human services, it's IT, it's business office, it's everything. And, and so, you know, other school models, and from my report, you know, when I eventually get a full report together, I'll show you some examples where, you know, costs are allocated to each of the responsibilities center. So that the, you know, the IT department has their own phone bill and supplies and equipment and all of those things. So, you know, if I look right now into something like the business office, there are only two or three accounts in there and they're all salaries accounts. So you're not looking at the full cost of the business office and budgeting it out. So that, that will be part of what I'm gonna be recommending going forward.
So I have a question, is that, is that, Darlene, is that how the town operates with this type of parameters?
The departments, the, the departments have, get their own bills. And they pretty much, they know from year to year, they monitor their, their electricity costs, their, you know, gas bills and their telephones. Telephone, actually, for the town, we actually get, we, we get one big bill and we actually do split that out. And we, we do it on an Excel spreadsheet for all the departments. It's just, we just take it and evenly across the board, just spread it out because we just have one big line, one big, and, and split out the Verizon bill. But the electricity costs and the gas costs are, each get their own bill.
Do your phone bills, are they close to that number?
No. I mean, the big bill, the big bill, I mean, nobody runs, we don't have anybody run over their telephone line. I don't, we don't see numbers like that. That's what we need to look, I mean, I'm thinking there's gotta be some data lines in there. I'm thinking there's gotta be some tech.
Day lines.
There's gotta be some data lines in there.
But shouldn't that be broken out into technology as opposed to?
Yes, that's why we need to.
Certainly are data lines in the technology budget, so.
So that phone is just telephone?
That's why we're gonna have to pull those bills and take a look.
That's why I say.
We need to see what, we need to go behind those numbers.
Because there's so much in the first few months, you gotta pull bills and you gotta go behind them and look and see what's in there, what's causing this. Just like the salaries in the McCarthy account. Get into the detail.
Have you seen savings in the utilities across the town?
Yes, we've been getting some credits on those bills, yes.
The contractual Bolton Orchard solar net metering credits, they've been coming in since the first of the year. And so to see now, this, early into this fiscal year, those kind of numbers, it's just mind-boggling. Because those we've been seeing, I mean, those are verified. What you, what you aren't seeing is all those solar arrays that are constructed, have been constructed on the roofs of all the school buildings, those are not operational. So you're not seeing that, nor are you seeing the net metering credits associated with that production. So those are the two things, and, and those numbers are significant when you look at the, at the potential savings. And, and right now, we're, 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 the facility, construction is almost complete, but we're still wrestling with the National Grid and Johnson Controls over the whole net metering themselves. And in fact, we're looking at an analysis that it may be more effective in the long term because of the changes in the market. Actually, the way, the, the way the model was built with the, with the performance contract was we were basically gonna, if you put the array on the high school, then the power goes into the high school, it reduces the bill. It's actually now with the market conditions, it would actually be more effective to take the electricity at the high school and actually send it all out to the, to the market. And then you'd actually generate more net metering credits as a whole for the community and, and significantly more than do, than basically just doing it onsite. And so that's one of the things we're, we're, we're working right now with the consultant to, to figure out, you know, how to a, a, address that. That may take us a little bit of time, though, which would then delay the savings, but it would be beneficial in the long term. That could be part of the reason.
Yeah, we'd have to bump your budget back up until we figure that out.
So, so at this point, there is nothing, there's nothing, none of those arrays are on, online and going. In fact, they haven't even started the ground array at Harrington yet. That's the last work that will be done.
Just another point, these numbers, they make me a little nervous too because there's, we have the E-rate account also that takes, they can charge, I think it's like fifty-four thousand, fifty-three thousand dollars this year that we're allocating, that those lines can also be charged to. The E-rate account did not get spent completely in fiscal fourteen. I think it was about seven hundred and thirteen, seven hundred and thirteen dollars was left on the books that closed to the general fund. That could have been, you know, two Verizon bills that could have been paid from that account that didn't get paid.
And, and actually, our electricity costs this year, our, our contractual price on July first went down about fifteen percent from prior year. So, right, this utility thing is, is very perplexing in terms of, you're just looking at year-to-date. I mean, I would almost be curious to see where we are year-to-date, a year ago versus where we are year-to-date to now, to get a handle on what's going on.
Based upon the numbers, I suspect it's probably be about the same.
But it shouldn't.
I know, that was my point. That's the point I'm trying to make, I'm not gonna say that.
Because in essence, we've only, we've only been in school for two months, September and October, and we may not even gotten the October bill yet.
If you, if you look.
That's the scary part.
I know, if you look at the way the numbers brought out, which is basically almost a million bucks, nine hundred and, nine hundred and fifty thousand, and you roll it out over the whole period of time, you're gonna consume about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars at this point in time last year. So we, we took literally seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of our budget, right? And, but we're not realizing any cost savings at all on it, so that's the big concern I have. You know, because if, and I'm not saying that's the case, if that seven fifty was back in there i- in, in our budget, so it's not fifty million, it's fifty million, seven hundred and whatever, a thousand dollars, this could change the whole picture of what, the whole issue that we have here.
One of the things that may be happening, and we're not to get into a tangent, but if they did all, and they did all the energy performance measures across the community, including air handlers and everything else, if those things are now operational and fully functioning, and they may not have been fully functioning and operational before they were repaired and, and replaced, that could be a driver of costs as well. Because, you know, as you know, the whole issue of air exchange, everything else, if those, you know, we've put in, you saw the whole list of twenty-nine measures and from boilers to air exchange to ventilating units. And what happens is, is that could be, that could be part of the explanation, is that your, your system's actually functioning as they're intending to.
And in the past, they weren't. Again, so that was, my, in, the first question was, is how did we determine the formula for this, for this reduction of whatever the value number was, seven hundred and something thousand dollars? Because I don't, I, I'm not saying we're not going to, but at least at this point in time, I don't see the realization of that savings occurring. And that's hurting us in looking at, forget about fourteen at this point, just looking at fifteen and then sixteen beyond. You know, Matt asked, you know, you know, Matt and Pat both said, you know, we really wanna take a look at fifteen and sixteen. I, until we resolve that, I, to be honest with you, I'm gonna have a hard time trying to determine that number. We need to figure out how that, how that's gonna affect us. And, and I think one of the big things really has to be looked at, and Dr. Tiano, if you would do this with Frank's assistance, to determine that, this thing here, at least, so we have an answer to this phone thing and find out what that is.
The high school one is, would be a real good one to look at because your year-to-date actual in high school is already, you get a hundred thousand dollar budget and sixty-one thousand expended, of course, minus the seventeen.
If I could, Nick, Nick, I think Paul, I think National Grid, I mean, excuse me, Johnson Controls is part of the ESCO. Aren't they supposed to be doing quarterly reviews?
Right, but, but, but also, we track every electricity expenditure, every account is tracked on the town side by our energy tracking system, so we should be able to grab that data pretty easily. Because we, we have to report that to the DOER as, as part of the monitoring as well. So we should be able to grab that data pretty, pretty succinctly and pretty efficiently.
Don't we have a guaranteed savings each year?
Right, yes, you do. Once it becomes, once it becomes operational, the problem is, is we're not fully operational.
I ask a question about.
Oh, so we don't have a guarantee until it becomes fully operational?
Right. So in other words, you're actually getting savings in advance of the substantial completion. Because a lot of these things were done prior to the substantial completion and were just not quite there yet.
Right, but the formula for the school budget was kicked in from the beginning of the year, even though we know we weren't gonna get the realization of all that. savings.
But it shouldn't have been because what's really going on in schools in July and August? You know, that's what I said, there shouldn't have been a lot of, because essentially, everything was done by the opening of school other than the solar arrays.
But you said that was the highest savings, that's where you're going to get the most savings.
That's the most savings.
I don't know.
How is the, you know, the town and the school working together on their IT and their data lines, how is that, how is the charges for the mutual use of the lines, how is that reflected on the school side versus, could some of that number on the telephone data line be a shared expense? Is that?
I think first, I think first we need to look to see if that is data line. We're assuming we're not, but there's, I think that the IT, the school IT budget has a data line, budget line item in that. Is that right, John? I think there's one, there's one in there.
I'm going to, I'm going to guess, just guess, that there, in that line, there's equipment.
Okay, well, I think we've identified something that we need to drill down in a lot more. And rather than speculating on what it might be or what it might not be, you know, that's a, definitely a task for some of these folks to undertake over the next several days and weeks. I think we need to move on to how we're going to address these at-town meeting, these issues. So Paul, if you want to.
Before we do that, because we can probably excuse John, maybe we could ask him just basically similar, where he goes from here and what we can expect in terms of reports and completion of his efforts, that would probably be helpful.
Well, my plan was to start this week on, on doing the policies and procedures and internal controls walkthroughs. I'm almost wondering at this point, one problem is, right now, the payroll clerk is out on medical leave for a period of time, so I don't have access to that individual. But, you know, maybe I should concentrate this week and the next few days on looking into some of these, these items, looking into the, you know, helping with the payroll. I know that Frank is looking at that now, but, you know, helping, look into the payroll and look into these utilities and see if we can come up with some of those answers earlier rather than later.
And so we can expect another meeting before the end of the year then to give those recommendations, to get an idea of?
Yeah, I've started, you know, I have several pages of recommendations based on the work I've done to date, but as I go through the processes in depth, I'll be certainly having more recommendations.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, as the chairman Lo just noted, two weeks from tonight, we're scheduled to be at the fall annual town meeting adjournment session preceded by the special town meeting. What we thought would be helpful, if you can, can you pull up the spreadsheet, John? And we'll pass out copies, is what we, what we prepared and, you know, trying to gather this information and integrate it is, we basically thought we'd put a spreadsheet together that basically shows the available funding sources to the community. We don't include in our analysis any of the schools' funding sources because they're not town meeting funding sources in terms of issues such as circuit breaker and special aid, that's, those numbers are not appropriated by town meetings, people understand that. But we do have funds and we'll, once it gets pulled up, we'll go on to that. And then also, we then list the funding requests for the, the three financial articles on the special town meeting as well as the remaining five financial articles on the adjournment session of the fall annual town meeting. And what we can do is just sort of pass these out so you have hard copy while the paper copies are going around. Can you control that while I speak to it? So probably, probably the place to begin would be the top, going across the top where it's, the, the top column is called funding sources, and I'll just sort of walk through them from left to right, going across the row. What we've, what we've identified is basically seven funding sources for the town meeting. The first is the sale of real estate account. That is a restricted account, meaning that the proceeds from the sale of real estate under, under state law can only be expended, you know, towards a, a real estate acquisition by the town and such. And then also, excess bond premium comes from borrowing by the community in terms of the today's interest conditions, they provide us with bond premiums. And after the cost of the borrowing is paid out, then the excess then goes to an account that, that has to be expended within a 12 to 18 month period. So that's a restricted account as well. You then move over to the next item, which is called overlay surplus. What we did to bring everything to town meeting is we basically looked at every funding source, and you can see, sale of real estate, excess bond premiums. We also asked through the Board of Selectmen to go to the assessors and say, okay, you know, your work is dynamic as the year goes on and taxes get paid and tax cases get settled. The town sets aside funds for abatements to the property tax every year, and then as cases get settled and taxes get paid, those monies are freed up under state law. And so the, the available funds that we have at this point is the 685, 850 into that fund. The, and that was done last week by the assessors. The, we also have the $400,000 Finance Committee Reserve Fund. We also have remaining $2,331,289 in available free cash. And then our stabilization fund is almost $7.3 million. And then finally, there is a sewer enterprise fund free cash of $1.4 million. That money is restricted to the sewer enterprise operations because again, that's, that's a standalone accounting system. So we basically have listed every resource and then we checked with the accounting office and made sure that John and I weren't missing anything and that the numbers were accurate. You then go down to the left-hand side of the spreadsheet, which is the listing of articles. The first one, Article 1, on the special town meeting, has to do with the unpaid bills of the prior fiscal year for the school department, and that funding request is $141,245. The next one is an article on the special town meeting warrant. The Board of Selectmen is seeking the town's approval and authorization and appropriation to purchase the property located at 101 Mill Road. That acquisition price is $490,000. The next one is a request from the Public Works to reconstruct the Mill Road Sewer Pump Station at a cost of $350,000. Finally, there's the FY 14, 15 adjustments to the operating budget, which obviously would include adjustments to the Chelmsford Public Schools. But at the same time, we took the opportunity to contact all the town department heads and say, hey, look, at this point, we want to know everything. We're not only looking for every available revenue, but we want to know departments, you know, what do you see to get you through the end of this fiscal year? Typically, in the past, that's been done in April, but given that we're now into November, let's see where we are, and then we'll spend a little bit of time on that because, and I'll actually, Darlene, to address that. But at this point, we think the sum total, you know, could be about $850,000. There is a request for the DPW Vehicle Maintenance Relocation from Richardson Row to, to the facility on Alpha Row, that's $1.9 million. And then there's a request for the demolition of the fire station in the center of $150,000. And then there are two articles that are unspecified at this point regarding an appropriation reduced to tax levy and an appropriation of funds in the stabilization fund. So what I did as a starting point was saying, well, if the, if the town wanted to fund all of the requested funding requests, how could you do that with the available funding sources? And this was sort of an analysis of how that could be done. And if you sort of just walk through it, if you have the hundred, article on the $141,000 in unpaid bills, you could fund that through free cash, and so you can see how it lines up as you go across. The 101 Mill Road, for the $490,000 for that, that land and building acquisition, you obviously start with the sale of real estate fund, the $116,000, and then you, one could apply the overlay surplus to get to 490. And then you go to the next line for the Mill Road Sewer Pump Station. Again, that obviously goes to the column on the far right because that's the restricted revenue from the sewer enterprise fund free cash. So that one was the easiest, easiest one for us to do. And then the next one for the FY 15 budget, we basically looked towards free cash and then also, the way the number was growing, you know, we said, well, given that normally we would draw off of the Finance Committee Reserve Fund at Springtown Meeting to meet these things, we look a little, to draw a little off that at this point. Article 6 of the DPW Maintenance, you could, you could fund that again from the excess bond premium, you could fund it from overlay surplus, and you could fund it from free cash. The demo of the fire station, you could fund from free cash. So if you look at the bottom for the ending balance, you would have, the town would have, under this scenario, would have expended all of its sale of real estate fund, would have expended all of its excess bond premium, would have expended all of the overlay surplus, would have, would have a balance of 260 in the Finance Committee Reserve Fund. The free cash would have all been appropriated, the stabilization fund would have been unchanged, and the sewer enterprise fund would have been reduced by the project for the pumping station. That's a scenario, and then what happens is, is obviously, if you change the models or if the town disapproves or approves, then that model becomes dynamic. But we thought we at least had to put something so that people can at least start conceptualizing, well, you know, what do we have for requests and what do we have for funding sources? And then how, how could those be aligned? And we could have a different funding plan for everybody in the room, I'm sure, but it's, it's at least a way to, to look at it in terms of what we have for funding and then what we have for requests, how could those be aligned? And again, not saying they will be aligned, but that basically, it's a way of starting the methodology. So I, I think I'll stop there, Pat, to see if there are any questions about any of the requests or funding sources.
Okay.
Yeah, Paul, the 849, 500, does that include a sum of money for the school department?
Yes, as you can see, and I'll ask Darlene to just sort of walk us through the FY 15 budget request. What, what I assumed is, I appropriated the 470 for the public schools, which does not include the 141 in unpaid bills, that would leave the half million dollar cushion in the schools. And I'll ask Darlene to go through the rest.
On the schools, the 470, so we had the eight, the 800,000 and the 350, and what we did was use some of their circuit breaker money and some of their school choice money. Again, we didn't use all of that down, we just reduced some of it so that we could leave about $500,000 for them to have. So we came down to that 470 number that we would be looking to fund. The fire personnel, 225, we know that the, the fire chief is going to be retiring, so he will have a payout at the, at year end. He'll be leaving in the June timeframe, so that'll be for that fiscal year. So we need to cover his pay. We also had a, a union dispute that we had to make a payment on that. And he has four men that are out on injury. Those men are not going to be returning before the end of the fiscal year. And what happens when having men out, you need to backfill those men, they have to cover those stations, and most of them are being covered on an overtime, through the overtime. As of today, he is over 50% expended on his overtime budget. So looking at these numbers and calculating out what he's going to need for the end of the fiscal year, this is what him and I came up with for that. Police personnel, again, we had Chief Murphy retired, we did have his payout that was, wasn't expected and wasn't budgeted at the time. We do have a man out on injury in the police department also that we need to be paying. Sometimes that, again, is, when they're out, they have to be backfilled with overtime. So we just thought that for their personnel. We also do, yeah, we also have a retiree next, next week. Officer Marlin's going to be retiring, so there's another retiree that we'd have to pay out, their payout for their, when they leave. And again, those were two unexpected. The public facilities expense, those were some asbestos work that had to be done at the Westland School and at the Parker School. There's asterisks next to those. What we'd like to do is, $49,000 was, of work was done on the air unit, there were air units being removed, there was asbestos work there, that was at the Westland School. So Kathy, to your, we'll be charging the Westland School, we'll be charging the daycare, the childcare for that amount. So that's why that asterisk. But $10,000 of the work was done at the Parker School. They, when they were removing the steam boiler there, there was asbestos, so it had to be done there, so. But $49,000 that will actually be charged to the, to the Westlands. Municipal administration expense, I can just run you down a little bit what those are. We have $18,000 of our audit that we needed to fund, $17,000 for an assessment center for the hiring of a new chief. And we had, we have a view permitting software for people that come, can actually go online and get building permits and things like that. We have a maintenance cost of that of $16,000 a year. So those, those costs fall into the administration for expense. Library personnel, she had some, in doing her budget, she actually forgot to bring in some, a few step increases for some folks in the library, for like the Kohler increases. So we needed to just add some money to her personnel. And then the municipal administration personnel, we're going to, we did have some personnel changes in there, we're going to have a retiree. It hasn't been finalized, but we're just going to see some personnel changes that have happened. There was a promotion in, within my office that, from the audit, they asked me to have an assistant to the town accountant, so I had promoted within my office, and that was a little money there. John had some personnel changes in his head office, so those are just some of the personnel changes. So with totaling those, they're $898,500. We did take the $49,000 out of there, so we're looking at the 849,500 as well we'll be needing for fiscal 15 budget allocation change.
So the 59 is taken out of there?
The 59 will be taken out of there, so it's a total, yes, total of, I noticed the sheet that you had, I'm sorry, that the, the bottom piece, I had deducted out, it's not on there. So if you take the eight, 898,500 minus 49,000, it comes down to 849,500.
Which is the number up above.
Yeah.
The 49 is, I guess the question I was going to ask is, even though you would quote-unquote charge to Parker, but isn't that part of the ESCO when they pull the boiler?
No, that was, we're not responsible, they're not responsible and the ESCO doesn't include for asbestos material removal. And again, the bulk of that, 49,000 of it, was in the Westland School.
Yeah, it was actually 59, 49 was the Westland School.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so does this amount still include the, the anticipated judge adjustments we were going to be making before all this came to light?
Yes, this, this has everything, as it is up to date. We've looked at everything. This, this is everything.
So, I don't mean to be obtuse about the Chelmsford Public Schools, but it'd be, because of, my heart, we all know, so $470,000, that's the cushion that we all think, take into consideration with circuit breaker and the school choice funds. If, I just want to make sure that there's not going to be a reduction to services, that we're getting an accurate number.
Got to go back to that utility line.
Right, but.
Taking no reserve there.
But I'm, I'm just clarifying that the objective is that the services to the students of Chelmsford is going to remain, I want to make sure we get the right amount of money so the services to the children remain the same.
They've already been reduced, though.
Pardon me?
They're not the same because they've already been reduced.
Okay, I'm asking from this point, the snapshot of this today, that's, that's what I'm asking.
You mean additional reductions? Additional reductions, is that what you're saying?
I'm asking, right. I can.
Yeah, run to me if you get the money.
I mean, I think I can answer this question.
I'm asking that because I think it's very important to the community to clarify that we're coming forward to work together so that we're maintaining the school department the way we want, and I want the number to be, and I know this conversation, but we have only two weeks, so I want the number to be accurate because it's very important that the students get what they need.
Would agree with that.
Everybody knows that, but.
Would agree with that 100% Kathy, and that's, you know, the school committee will be talking about our charge going forward for the next two weeks, you know, tomorrow night's meeting. You know, one of the things Frank already has on his desk, all the telephone bills have already been pulled, you know, we've identified some of the areas that we have to dig deep. You know, the question has come out, you know, the numbers you're looking at, you know, what's behind them? Are our numbers accurate on each specific line? And that's, we've been spending hours upon hours in terms of going through our budget. Working with Mr. Sullivan has been, has been fantastic as well as with the committee. You know, the opportunity that presents ourselves. You know, the opportunity that presents ourselves is, it's a dire situation, but at the same time, we're, we're gonna continue to, to go through that with a fine-tooth comb. We do have that, we do have a two-week window in which to do this. And at our subcommittee meeting this morning, that was a question we had, is to make sure when we put these numbers together, accurate to the best of our ability, and that's, you know, Mr. Sullivan had said the same thing as well. He'll be with us as well in terms of going through managerial piece this week, so he's on site for, for questions we may have and, and his guidance.
I have a question as well. Given what we heard tonight about, about the, the energy costs, telephone costs, and possibly some issues in payroll, wouldn't you feel better, as a committee, to have a little bit more of a cushion in there than 470,000?
As a committee member, I would feel better with more of a cushion, but I would also feel better if we could reinstate the two positions that are remaining, that we took out. I feel like that's a lot of the feedback we've been getting. I mean, our meetings have seen more people in the last few months than we have seen all the years before. So this, this has hit a sore spot in our town. So I'd, I'd ask that those two positions be included in the funding so we can reinstate them. We have an MCAS-tested subject that, well, two MCAS-tested subjects that have no curriculum coordinator now. And then we have the library. So, you know, that would be something I would like you to think about.
What, what is the cost for the two people?
Well, it, it, I think partly it goes back to the question of the cushion. The, the science and the library coordinators are, in fact, in, they have not been removed yet. So their costs are built in.
They're built in already.
And you might argue that the 470 includes them. What it, I, I, I think the only, the place that that argument has a weakness is that we are intending to try to realize that additional savings, and that it builds into the cushion, right? That's the plan right now, unless we hear, unless we hear otherwise.
I just wanted to be out there.
The other, the other thing is that you would, it, we have included the savings realized for the English coordinator. So you would have to increase that number by, what, 40,000?
Forty-six.
Forty-six thousand.
The other piece, Tom, is if you take a look at the summary of all of the numbers from, from the school department, there's an anticipated $215,000 coming into school choice this year, which is there.
Well, again, that's, that's, that's being explicitly included in the cushion.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, that's part of it.
When, when people say they're comfortable with a $500,000 cushion, what, what they, what they're saying is they're comfortable with the 500,000 plus the 215 or 220 or so.
That's what I'm saying, though, he's asking if we need more than what it is that's stated on the line item, that part is added to it, provided that that is recognized by the end of the year. So there is a revenue that, some, some revenue that is there that would be added to that.
I, I think what we really need to do is, at least from, from our committee's standpoint, is we really need to sit down and talk tomorrow at our meeting, and, and really get into the nitty-gritty details of, of what we're seeing, what we've determined here, and where we want to go in, in a direction, and make a determination at that point, and then present something that, that says, this is the direction we want to go. Paul has done a nice job presenting a document here. This may not be the final number. I'll be honest with you, I'm not happy at all. Looking at a couple of the line items here, I don't think we've, I don't think we've covered everything. I, I, I think we're, I think we're in trouble in additional 350 to 400 to 500,000. Just my rough guess by looking at it. That's just my concern I have.
Just, just to set the ta, just to set the table, I guess, the other, the question, that, that your question brings up, Tom, is where would that extra money come from? Because under this plan, the free cash is completely expended.
Well, you know, the free cash, there's flexibility in the free cash. You don't have to do some of these things. You could do part of some of these things, and there'd be extra money to use for something else. So, you know, rather than, I'm not picking on it, but rather than, rather than doing the DPW draft for a million three, maybe you can do part of it and save.
A million nine.
Pardon me?
A million nine.
Million, I'm sorry, million nine. Maybe, maybe you could do it, you know, do part of it for a million four and save 500,000.
There is, there is just one other thing that's not in this list, and that's full-day kindergarten.
Well, I think that that's.
And, and when, right, well, I'm, I'm just gonna make sure we all, we all recognize that, right? When, when we talk about completely expending the school choice money, that's, that's our bridge to kindergarten. And theoretically.
We delay it by a year.
I, I, it may be more, it may be more than a year.
Maybe more than a year, given the way the budget is, I mean.
Well, I mean, delay it a year, so.
And the other, the other place that that could come from would be putting some free cash into the stabilization fund.
Rather than spending it all this year.
I think we're going down a discussion, with all due respect.
It is, it's a difficult discussion, because we, well, we need to have our discussion, but FinCom needs to have theirs, and some of what they're gonna discuss, I, I think I'm hearing them say depends on what they, they hear us request. The Board of Selectmen are, are in the same position as well, and I think we, we're trying to be respectful as well, and, and gather feedback about what, what do the other, what do the other people in town, what do the other boards in town think about some of these requests? What's a reasonable thing to do and what's not? I, I'd still love to hear some feedback on the idea of keeping the $500,000 cushion as opposed to expending it to zero with the understanding that the town would have to be our backstop in that situation.
I think that makes sense.
Well, I mean, anyway, if, if, so I'll be quiet now and, and listen, but.
I, I, I just need an explanation of, of the auditor, in his second page, he talks about 2014 bills charged 2015, 878,340, right? And then a projected deficit of 353,000, is that right?
Yep.
Comes out to 1231,340. And if you add the 500 buffer, you get to 1, 1.731,340. And then if you leave 500,000 in the circuit breaker and school choice, and take out 1.3, 1.238.602, that brings us down to 738,602. Why is it, why, why are we doing 470? I guess I don't know how you got to that number.
You also didn't mention the unpaid bills.
Well, that, yeah, because that was gonna be taken up at a separate article, so I cross that out, right? Because it's gonna be a different action. It's not part of the action where we're paying the 2015, where we're increasing the 2015 budget.
I think we're taking 165,000 from circuit breaker.
If you take the, the way, I did it in the aggregate part, if you take the 878 in prior year bills.
Yep.
And then you take the 141 in the unpaid bills, and then you take the 350 in the deficit, that brings you to 1, 1.37 million, round numbers. Then, and then if you take the available revenue, instead of it being 1238, it's really 738.
Oh, you're leaving more in there.
500,000.
In each one.
No, no, total, total. And then you, and then you take away, you know, then you take away the 470, and then roughly the 141 in unpaid bills, you're pretty much there. And then, you know, you're within 20,000 or so. And then what, what we point out is, again, those are the numbers we're using, but again, there are some revolving fund balances that can somehow add a little bit to the, to the equation as well, and, and that was sort of the discussion earlier about, a lot of the drain in the operating budget, we saw, if there's 100, if there's 100, $350,000 deficit, we saw about half of that came from revolving fund activities between the lunch program and the athletic program. So I'm saying, it's somehow, so I'm thinking maybe we can, a little bit of money could go in from that area. Again, it's just an approximation, but that's how the numbers work.
500,000, that they asked for a buffer in there?
The 500,000 is the buffers in there, remains, yes.
It's in it?
Yes. That's, that's how we did it in terms of rough, round numbers. But, but, but the concern I have, and I want to point this out to, to everybody in the room, and the community in there watching, you gotta think, not just how do we solve '15, but how are we sustaining going to '16, '17, everything? If you look at this scenario, we've got a $350,000 deficit for '15, and then there are some town expenditures, let's add another 50, or whatever number, 75, or whatever, let's say 425, to, you know, to use a round number. All these funding sources, none of them are reoccurring.
Right.
Because to the, not, it's not to say that we won't have free cash next year, but let's, let's recognize what's just happened here. We, we've just pulled every drawer out and dumped it on the table, so, including the, the overlay surplus and everything else. So when we close the end of this fiscal year, we're not gonna be discussing a $2.6 million free cash number, it's likely gonna be less than a million dollars, barring unforeseen, you know, we, we don't know what the winter's gonna be like for snow and ice and all this other stuff, but the bottom line is, we, we gotta bear in mind, what are, what are, you know, sustainable recurring costs, and how are we funding those with our recurring revenue going forward? And, and as much as we're focusing on '15, you gotta recognize that you're now preparing the '16 budget, and that's what we heard a few moments ago, you've gotta use that as your base for recurring, a level service, or whatever you want to call it, and then start building from there. So when you start and build '16, you're gonna assume, you know, you're gonna have, you're gonna have the contractual for '16, you're gonna have, you know, your trends, give me an explanation as to why those trends aren't gonna continue for '16. So that's the part that alarms me, is, you know, how do we, how do we sustain things going forward?
But the bills from 2014 charged to 2015 shouldn't be counted in there.
Right, those won't be, but the bottom line is that the, when, when the, when the accountant did the adjustment, he found a true '15 deficit in the school budget of 350,000, not even discussing utilities, but 350. So that means if we're starting to budget '16, we've gotta put that 350 into the mix for going into '16. And that's what I'm saying, and then, then you got, and then if there is utilities on top of that, and every, and anything else, you can see, you can see the concern.
That definitely multiplies going forward.
Exactly.
So I'm, I, at this point, I'm very uncomfortable making any recommendations.
But we, but we have to, we have to act, we have to act. I mean, we, you know, we, we, we can't.
Be definitive on any recommendation at this point, how can we be if we don't have any definitive numbers?
Well, the school committee's gonna meet tomorrow night, the school committee's gonna meet tomorrow night, they're gonna, they're gonna reflect and come up with some number.
Tomorrow night, they're gonna give us a number?
Well, we have to discuss what we, our action is gonna be.
We'll, we'll discuss, trying to build on the feedback we get tonight, we'll, we'll discuss what we think is a, is the best path forward. It's gonna be made with limited information. We, I mean, we just don't know some of these things, we can't, and some of them we can't predict. But, but I take Paul's meaning, that we, that maybe we shouldn't count too much on being able to do this again.
Can you give us a confidence level from one to 10?
On what?
Will we give you a number tomorrow?
No, how confident are you that your number's gonna be accurate?
But I'm sure they're doing their best.
Wait, our, what do you, I mean, my confidence level on the utilities is low. My confidence level on the, on the payroll is, is higher, right? I mean, you know, it, different areas have different confidence levels, I'd say.
But, but recognize, again, we're gonna come back to town meeting in April, and if, if, no, 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 but I'm just saying is, and then we're gonna, you know, I'm not saying we don't solve the problem, but the bottom line is, this is a dynamic process. It doesn't end tomorrow night, it doesn't end November 17th, it doesn't end April town meeting, it does, you know, it, it's, it's dynamic, and, and, and none of us can give you assurances on anything. Like you said, do, do we know if there's gonna be special ed coming in or going out of the district? How do we know that?
That's, that's always an unknown.
Exactly.
But that's always been an unknown. I, I guess the concern that, that I have is, I would hate to, as a town meeting rep, and, and I'm not gonna speak for all the reps out there, but I'm sure that they won't be, they wouldn't appreciate too much is if we go to the well today, and then we go back to the well again. You know what I mean? I mean, they're gonna be like, you know.
But at some point, you gotta make a decision with the best information you have.
I, I, I agree, I, I do, but you, but that's my point, you can't keep going to the well all the time without them, at some point, they're gonna put their hands up and say, no moss. I mean, you know what I mean? It's just, just how it is. I mean, you've been there, you've sat through those meetings.
I do think, I think to that point, Nick, I think when we do go to town meeting, since it is coming up in just over two weeks, I think we just need to make that point very clear, that this is the best information that we have at the time, there may be some changes that need to be made in April, but we're doing the best job we can, but we know there might be some changes. I think that would be a really good message to present to town meeting as well. It's unfortunate that we have to, but I think, you know, we have to be honest with them.
But we, and we do have town meeting coming up, and, and that's what we have to do, you know, we have to come there with our best information, and, and do what we can, and use these numbers, or whatever number the school committee comes up with tomorrow, if you have a better number that's, you're more comfortable with. Good, Barbara.
Last Friday, I went to, Representative Cory Atkins holds these leadership meetings every few months, and Concord was there, Acton was there, Carlisle was there, and I represented Chelmsford, and I pretty much controlled the, the discussion. And we discussed Chapter 71, and I got a letter today from the Acton School Committee, he's written a letter, he'd like to include us in the conversation. But this issue is hitting every town, it's not just us. No one can project these special education costs, because you just can't. And every town that was at the table, it was the number one discussion for the entire period. So this is hard.
Yeah, so we can, we can only do what we can do with, with what information we have. So tomorrow will be the school committee's meeting, and we expect to have some feedback from, from that, and then Thursday will be the Finance Committee, the next opportunity to, to come up with how we're gonna approach this at town meeting, and next Monday will be the Board of Selectmen meeting, and a week after that will be town meeting. And obviously, many of these issues will, will be resolved then, some permanently, some not so much, but we'll just go forward with, with that. Do you have something, Janet?
So the FinCom plans to vote on Thursday night?
We may vote. That's what's on the agenda. May does not mean definitively yes.
Depending upon what you do tomorrow night, we'll have a better idea.
Okay. Paul, I've got a question for you. Last time you provided, before FinCom voted on the town warrant articles, you provided your recommendation. Are you gonna, if they provide numbers tomorrow night, are you gonna provide a recommendation prior to their meeting for them to vote on?
I gotta, I gotta see what happens tomorrow night, I also gotta see what the FinCom's doing, because my question is, the FinCom's not gonna vote on Thursday night, when are they gonna vote? You know, you know, are they gonna have another meeting the following Thursday, or are they going, and what information would they be seeking? Or, or are we gonna go on the 17th and meet, you have recommendations that evening? We, we, we're, town meeting is on a, two weeks from tonight, and so, yeah, I really need to see, you know, what information is still coming forth.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have to be brutally honest with you, nothing, I've seen nothing here at this point that gives me enough confidence to say, I'm gonna feel comfortable with making recommendations tomorrow night. I am, I, I gotta be brutally honest with you, that, that, that whole utility thing, I've got a huge issue with. That can hurt, that can hurt us by the tune of half a million dollars.
Yeah, but you have to.
No idea what that is.
I know, but you have to.
I know you could, but I understand, but.
You can't pass that along to us.
Oh, no, I'm not going to. No, 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 that's what I'm gonna say. What I'm gonna say is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a caveat in there and say, okay, this is what Paul's recommendation, and I, and I think they're, they're good recommendations, but like, we're gonna have to put a little, little asterisk next to there and say, you know something, there's a big unknown in there, the big unknown is that utility.
Well, I think.
Worst-case scenario.
I think we all know, it's not gonna be perfect.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what we're gonna have to do. And I'm concerned when I do that, because when I do that, then the number could fluctuate from 470,000, as, as Paul noted, to 970,000, or a million dollars.
But Nick, I think what we have to do now is we have to perform the triage, close the wound.
Right.
And then work on the surgery for fiscal year '16, because we have to do something, and we have to make recommendations.
No, no, but you're talking about '16, I'm still talking about '15.
I am, and I'm saying we need to close the wound in some way, shape, or form, because we can't just let this.
Oh, no, I, I'm not saying we do, no, not at all. I agree 100%, but, but what I wanna make sure is we, we come up with a number that everyone agrees to, and otherwise, five months from now, we're all gonna be sitting around the table going, how did this happen? We're short another half a million dollars.
Okay, I think we know what we all have to do over the next several weeks, so. Any other closing thoughts?
Uh, yes, I, this is the tri board here, and there are a lot of people around this table that understand situations in the town and what we're trying to decide, but sincerely, But sincerely, if there is anybody in the community that feels like they have substantial knowledge and interest and ability to suggest a solution, please let us know. Because this is not a closed meeting, per se, in thoughts and ideas. This is the whole town, and we need to work together, and especially times like this. So, I would welcome positive, constructive suggestions from anybody in the town.
Okay, that's, I think everybody would second that request.
Want to bottom motion?
Can I just ask one request? Can we get the spreadsheet sent to Paul, and he can distribute it?
Send it to Darlene, Darlene can get it out to everybody.
Thank you.
Because I'd like to dig into those numbers, too. Thank you.
And Paul, did you have any last, last words?
Well, the, the, the bottom line is, remember where, where, what we did. We postponed the action at the financial articles on, at the last month's following of town meeting to the latest possible date of November seventeenth. We really can't push that date any further out. And, and, and I don't know if we're going to know more information in two weeks, or in four weeks, or it'd be eight weeks, or when we'd have perfect information. But at some point, we've, we've got to make a decision and go forward. And as I said, you know, the, the process is dynamic. So, I think, you know, I, I think we've got to do our best to explain the case, make